Good afternoon, Commissioners. I wanted to provide a quarterly update on some of the activities of the SPAT, the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team. And in summary, we talked about four items that they've been talking about in their meetings and pondering how to best recommend an action on these. And I gave you some handouts to help with a couple of these. One of them was interest in a shower and hygiene center somewhere in town or in the vicinity. This would provide a place for individuals who don't have a home, don't have other places to go to take a shower, maybe do some laundry. Certainly, there seems to be an acute need for this within the community. Other communities have taken different approaches to providing this type of facility. We read about one instance where a bus was converted to a hygiene facility. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a permanent structure. So the committee was just looking at different options to provide that type of opportunity in town. We received a brief on civil-legal needs studies, and that's part of the handout I Legal needs are actually a rather broad topic. The priority for the Northwest, I believe it's the Northwest Justice Project Part Two the handout, they focus on domestic issue, domestic violence cases, but there's a broad number of cases that they'll take on. One that seems to be getting a lot of interest of late is for suspended licenses. Folks are having a problem, I guess reconciling when they get an infraction, goes unpaid. Eventually, if you don't pay that infraction for long enough, your license will be suspended. So if you get pulled over again in that situation, you'll get a, it's called a driver's with license suspended three misdemeanor infraction, and your troubles can begin. Thirty-three percent of all the violations cited in Washington are that violation, thirty-three percent.
Wow.
Three hundred thousand drivers in the state of Washington are currently driving in this condition, three hundred thousand. And it's a problem that some jurisdictions have been looking to solve. We heard a concept that was, I guess, created through Spokane and King County. I think it came along and adopted it where there's a system where you can get the fines and the interest on those taken away. It's put into a program where you pay it off, or you pay it off with a combination of fees and community service as a way to get some of these folks back whole again and where they can be driving. Another topic we've been discussing is the acute mental health crisis alternatives. I did provide a handout on that one as well. And there's been a number of, I guess, items identified as steps to move us toward having the ability to deal with this a little better. Step one would be to get some training for folks in the field, those first responders that are coming into a situation, to have the proper training so that they can recognize someone who's maybe potentially having some behavioral issues. And they would call a mental health professional. That mental health professional would sort of be the one that makes an assessment of how to deal with this. Part of the disconnect in what our current systems are allowing is that that person is usually dispatched out of Thurston County. It can take a long time for them to get here, and that's often problematic for the situation we have. So we've been looking for different ways to get some local folks that can provide that service here. Getting some transportation problems with that dealt with through funding. And then through a number of steps to establish a crisis center where we would have beds for folks that need those. In the short term, we would simply provide the transportation to another facility. Sort of a near-term or midterm step would be to get a modest facility here, up to five beds. Long-term, to have a fifteen or more bed facility in Mason County as sort of, again, a longer-term outreach. Some of the, I guess, the immediate steps in this are getting the training, identifying the funding for this transportation component, and starting the process of looking at where a facility like this could be located. If you had a five-bed facility, you know, where would that be? How would you get funding for that? So those are some immediate steps that I think the committee and others are analyzing. Last one is probably one they've spent probably the most time discussing. There's a lot of interest in forwarding the ability to build small homes or tiny homes, defining what those are, defining what some of the obstacles are and getting those developed, and looking for ways to forward that as a concept. And that concept would be either market-rate housing, which is simply something you'd buy just like any other house on the market, or alternatively as some sort of subsidized housing for folks that are homeless as a way to provide an alternative to a tent encampment as an example. So the committee's been weighing different ways to pursue moving that forward. I'm sure we'll be talking about that more in the coming months. That concludes my report. Unless you have some questions for me.
I just, I had been contacted a couple of times to ask if I knew of any locations that might be viable for the crisis center. Have you looked at any, or have they been ruled out, or where we are in that process?
We haven't, in terms of city staff, formally taken a real hard look at that at all.
Okay.
I know that other jurisdictions have done some of that work, and probably one of my first steps would be to try to piggyback on that if there's been some, you know, legal ramifications from selecting certain locations, what those were, and just try to avoid some of that kind of wasted time. But we haven't formally began that really.
Okay. So, are you done?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
I know the reason between, or the reason for just a five-bed, but can you explain why it can only, can't be more than a five-bed?
You can make a facility more than five beds. The regulations change when it's more than five beds, and I think that's one of the reasons for having that as an interim step would, I think, just ease us in our ability to make that happen. Besides the scale of it, if the regulations are a little easier to work with, it's just going to be easier to make a reality.
So would we look for, would we be looking for a larger facility than start out with five beds and then it can grow if it's a large enough facility?
That's certainly an option. You could expand at the same facility, or you could have a small facility with the idea that you're going to maybe locate that in a different part of town later as part of an expansion, but in a new location. Again, none of those details have really been hashed out.
Okay. Well, that sounds, sounds good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have our weekly reports, and Commissioner Moore, would you like to share what you may be doing this, will be doing this week?
I will. I'll be working, trying to find a time when Michael Olson, who has volunteered to move the dispatch shed, dispatch office, we're going to be meeting with Sierra Pacific to discuss the details of that so that he and the other contractors can take a look at the building and make sure that it's still viable to have it moved. So I don't know exactly when that will be happening now, this week, but it will be happening. On Wednesday, I won't be attending this, but I just want to remind everyone that there is the C Street Public Hearing on that landfill cleanup. So that will be with Department of Ecology. On Thursday morning, I have a downtown visioning meeting. And on Friday, I will be attending the groundbreaking for the new Habitat building at 2137 Washington Street. I'm very excited about that. And that's my week.
Wednesday, I'll be having my weekly briefing with Vicki this time, this week. Thursday, I'll be at the same downtown visioning meeting at 8:30 in the morning. And Friday, we'll be at the groundbreaking for the new Habitat House. And my Women's Republican Monthly Luncheon, I will be attending. And that's what I have. We have general comment right now, so has anyone signed up for a general comment?
We have two.
Okay.
Marilyn, do you want to speak now?
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. I had occasion to speak recently with the mayor and C Administrator about the city's reading of the Open Public Meetings Act, and I was pleased at the immediate and positive response my concern got. I want to extend that discussion this afternoon. The Legislative Declaration of Intent of the Open Public Meetings Act says, and it's speaking about public agencies, "It is the intent of this chapter that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly." Further, it states, "The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." Commissioned briefings are meetings in which staff informs those present about projects, concerns, plans for the future, issues that come up and the like, and which generally include discussion and questions. They are deliberations of a sort. I've spoken to several of you about holding this commission's briefings in such a way that they can be open to the public. I have been told, "Well, we can't hold them all in public because some of them are really long and technical." I would remind you that there are those of us in the community who can cope with long technical discussions. Part of the legislative intent specifies, "The people do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." I've been told there are things we can't or don't want to talk about in public. The Open Public Meetings Act provides a specific list of topics for which the commission can hold executive sessions, public excluded. I hope there are not other things that you don't want to talk about in public. A construction in law refers to determining what a particular statute means so that a court may apply it accurately. The construction section of the Open Public Meetings Act reads, "The purposes of this chapter are hereby declared remedial and shall be liberally construed." Shall is an imperative command. There's no leeway in that. A remedial statute, one is one that provides a remedy to some problem where none existed. Liberally construed means that the act should be broadly applied to effect its purposes, in this case, that deliberations and actions be conducted openly. Should be broadly applied to affect its purposes rather than restrictively or technically applied according to its strict terms. One-on-one briefings between staff and a single commissioner to which the public has no access may meet the letter of the law, the technical specifications. One commissioner alone doesn't constitute a quorum, so it's not a meeting. But to my mind, it doesn't comply with the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act, that deliberations be conducted openly. And so, in the spirit of people insisting on remaining informed, I would like to request that this commission immediately move to adopt the county's model of open, weekly, public briefings with the commission as a whole to which the public is invited so that we can stay informed about those issues the commission is discussing. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Marilyn, are all of the things that you read in this packet?
The quotes are. I didn't include my comments, but the quotes from the Public Meetings Act, the construction and the liberally construed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for the?
Lisa, do you want to speak now?
Do you get three minutes per whatever, or only three minutes for altogether?
You may have three minutes now, and you may have three minutes at the end.
Okay. Yeah, this is for general?
Okay.
Anything?
Well, let's see. I don't think we have really any subject except maybe the task force would be, that you would want to speak on. Otherwise, if you just have a general, probably leave it till the end.
Okay. Yeah, I checked with Group Health, and they didn't know that Shelton Family Practice would do urgent care even though they're not listed as urgent care in their directory, but they do some items of urgent care problems. So she said she would be working with Group Health in order to make that more, you know, so it's in the book so people know where they would go and so forth. Well, it's on page 66, but the only catch to it is that you would have to inform Group Health within 48 hours after you went to urgent care, or they don't cover it. But there is an exception rule, and it's on page 66 of Group Health booklet. So I found that out, which no one told me that, so thank you for letting me know that there was something available. But they're closed on Sunday, so I was still thinking, hoping maybe that there would be bus services coming from Olympia to Shelton so people could use urgent care in Olympia who go to Group Health, if that's possible. Because they run Sundays all day in Olympia, could they come here just so people could utilize that for emergencies? So they have to go to the hospital and get charged buku bucks.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
We don't have any jurisdiction over the hospital and the care and all that, so you might check with Mason General. I don't know. I know they're expanding all the time.
Oh, okay, good.
Sean, do you want to speak now? Yeah. So, right now, if you want to pay utilities for the city of Shelton, you can't do that on the Internet, and I think that's pretty important.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm new at this. I need you to state your name.
My name is Sean Byrd, whole name?
Yes, thank you very much.
And is, do you need, can I just go?
No, you can go.
Okay. That's basically what I was saying.
Yeah.
Right now, we can't pay for utility bills on the Internet. I think that'd be really important. I couldn't find any other cities who don't have that set up yet, even Stevenson in Skamania County, which has a population of 1,500, had online bill payment, and Shelton has more than, I believe, more than 10 times that population, so it, or close?
10,000.
10,000, okay, so not quite 10,000, but a significantly larger population. I just feel like it's something we could really use. I would appreciate it. I know there's a lot of other people who really appreciate it. I'm the Systems Administrator at Hiawatha. I took some vacation time to talk about this, and I'd be willing to volunteer any kind of consultation. I've set up websites that receive payments online before. I don't know if that's, would help speed things along. I can volunteer some time or something. I just, is there any way you could?
Can't answer that right now.
Okay.
I think you should stay around for the Tyler update at the end of the meeting.
Okay. I've never been to one of these. I didn't know, like, how this works. So I just go sit down?
Welcome. Yeah, have a seat and get comfortable now. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sean.
It's always a bit intimidating, isn't it?
Thank you for choosing the city for your vacation.
Yeah, pretty nice.
Those are all the speakers we have.
That's all, okay. So there's nobody else, okay? The consent agenda, we have none to be read, and we have no old business. We do have new business brought to us by the Shelton Arts Commission Director Mark Ziegler. Is that good?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Today, I'm bringing you the recommendation of appointment to the Shelton Arts Commission. Amy Cooper has submitted a letter of interest for appointment on that commission. We currently have two openings, two of the five openings. Two of the five positions are open right now. Commission action recently broadened the spectrum of eligibility of those five positions to anybody that lives in Mason County. Amy Cooper happens to be a city resident as well and a business owner downtown, so I think that's a good representation. I think you have a letter, Amy's letter, as well in your packet, but has a degree from Northwest College of Art, visual communications, a major in graphic design. So brings some experience not only in education, but in her personal and professional life as well that would lend itself quite nicely to the Arts Commission. With your approval, I would ask that Amy's appointment be on the consent agenda for next week, and this would fill out a four-year term through December 31st of 2019.
I think Amy would be an excellent addition to our Arts Commission.
She would, and her baby.
So, Mark, would Amy be number four, or she's number?
Yeah, fill the fourth position.
Okay.
Exactly. We still have one opening on the Arts Commission. If anybody else is interested, a simple letter of, a letter of interest addressed to the Commissioners through my office, and I'd be happy to have you out.
That would be great to have a full board.
Yeah.
So I recommend that that be put on next week's consent agenda. The date, what's the next week's date? 4/4. So the consent agenda for 4/4, that will be on that. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
And I think you would be a great asset, yes. And you don't have any questions or any more comments?
No, I am fine with that.
Okay. Let's see. Number two, under the new business, another, you're on today, aren't you? Steve Goines will be presenting the Comprehensive Plan Update, 2015, 2016.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just as in a bit of background here, some of this may be things that I've repeated to the commission maybe multiple times in the past, but there might be folks in the audience that haven't heard this. The city is in the process of completing its periodic comprehensive plan update. The comprehensive plan is sort of the framework document which we used to do a number of things in the city. Primarily, it's viewed as a land use policy document, but it does a lot more than that. And there's a number of elements to it. These are required components under the Growth Management Act. We are required by the Growth Management Act to complete this periodic update in 2016. That deadline has sort of moved around a little bit since maybe I even spoke to you last. Our current track is to complete a draft document by the end of June. We have discussed a couple of these elements already. I'm bringing forward two components of the comprehensive plan today for initial review. The first one is the economic development element. In terms of background, this element of the comprehensive plan was completely redrafted in 2012, so this version that we have is pretty new in its own right. What is in your packet is a version that includes underscored and stricken language so you can see the changes that are being proposed. Those changes are intended primarily to just modernize the document to our current status, if you will. In 2012, you may recall that we were still tracking a pretty deep recession. That has changed a little bit, and that's primarily the flavor of the changes in the narrative and different things you'll see. In the policy side, there are a couple of changes I should just point out because they are directly policy changes. And this is on page 10 of the element. The first policy is to expand the available, availability of land available for commercial and industrial development, construction in the community. Goal E1C was deleted, and I moved up goal D to take its place, and that's what you see there in the track changes. Essentially, this goal was to have the city provide development of land for a new industrial park. That maybe is a little beyond the reach of what we should be doing. Certainly, we don't have the resources to do that, nor do we generally practice in partnering in our current structure with developers to develop property. So we deleted that, that goal. The second one is on E2. There was a goal for the city to build a new water transmission line northwesterly out Springs Road to the Washington State Patrol Academy on SR2. That has been completed, so I removed that goal and just moved the rest of the goals, shifting goal D up to goal A. And those are the only policy or goal changes that were being proposed on that element. The second piece that I'm requesting initial review on is the county-wide planning policies. I did not provide a version that staff has prepared. What you have here is a version that the county's been working on for some time. The county's in the process of updating these county-wide planning policies, and we're trying to coordinate that between the city and the county. They have a number of other items that they have to consider that really aren't pertinent to our comprehensive plan. In addition, these policies were written in 1992, so on the other hand, these are quite old and probably should have been revisited some time back, but we're doing it now. The county has really just initiated their formal review of these changes. They're pretty far-reaching. For instance, some of them described subareas within Mason County. You may recall in times past hearing about the Hartstein Subarea Plan or the Southeast Mason Subarea Plan. Those policies are in here, but most of them have been stricken. You probably noticed that, there's quite a lot of pages here. A lot of them, the entire page has been stricken out. That's because a lot of those policies haven't adopted or incorporated in some other document. In our case, a lot of the policies that were related to the Shelton area planning is now part of our subarea plan, our UGA plan, if you will. So that's why a lot of those policies have been deleted. There are a few in here that I probably should point out that are changes in really the, what the policy's intended to state. On page three, there's a policy 15 and 16 at the bottom of the page. When you read that, and I'll attempt to read this with this stricken and underscored language, sometimes rereading these, you fumble through it. This says, "To encourage a variety of commercial uses in urban growth areas that serve a regional market as well as citizens of the UGA, using methods such as incentive programs that promote existing infrastructure, cost or fee reductions, highlighting workforce education programs, etc." That's a real change from what that policy stated before, as well as the policy below it encouraging a variety of industrial uses in the UGAs located in appropriate areas which can accommodate parking, loading, storage, public accessibility, and the transportation of products or goods. Those are very different in terms of what they said before. I wanted to make sure I pointed those out. There's a couple others I should probably capture here just so you look at those. And while I'm finding those, my objective here today was simply to introduce this, give you some time to review it. If you have specific comments, to let me know. I'd like to bring this back in a final version in a few weeks if I can incorporate any changes or thoughts that you have into that. The long-term goal is to, over time, have all these different elements incorporated into what will be a single comprehensive plan, along with a review of the development regulations that we need to propose to meet current laws or because of changes we've made here to make sure our regulations are consistent with those policies. And all that work will come together at the end of the year. So like I said, a number of the pages of this has simply been deleted. On page 16, you'll see there's a number of policies related to what are called limited areas of more intense rural development or lambards. The following several pages deal with county issues that really aren't specific to Shelton. Those are land uses that are in the rural areas, and there's different regulations for things like hamlets or areas where you have isolated industrial development, but we don't really have any land uses that match up with those. we don't really have any land uses that match up with those. I'm fumbling through this. It is quite long, I didn't realize. I'm not sure that I need to even incorporate all of these policies in our final document. I'm going to talk to Mason County about that and see what, and I think probably the decision will be several of these are just not pertinent to our purposes, and so the best we can we'll try to streamline that. And I thought there was a couple more I wanted to point out.
Would it be, the county would be, you'd be talking about like the Dayton Creek, Deer Creek, Eldon, Greatview, all those, right? That would be the county's interest?
Right. There's really not a policy directive for us to follow there.
Okay.
There were a couple of these where there was a mention of the city in terms of working together to promote certain types of housing or to promote utilities to support new development. And those are the ones I kind of need to follow up on and see how that coordination might be best suited. Way back in page 75, there are a couple policies I wanted to mention. Let me read if I can, if you're there. Policy number 14. Mason County's housing policy should encourage financial and regulatory flexibility to allow creative housing options such as accessory unit construction, single-room occupancies, clustering, manufactured homes, tiny microhousing, and siting for institutions. Additionally, county policies must also have codes, ordinances, and site plans that support development of special needs housing such as group homes, foster care facilities, supporting housing for people experiencing mental illness and additions, et cetera. The second one I wanted to read is number 16. Ensure that all residents of Mason County have an equal and fair opportunity to obtain adequate, safe, and sanitary housing suitable to their needs and financial resources regardless of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, national origin, family status, income, or disability. The second policy in particular, we incorporated earlier in the year, you may recall, when we did our housing update. That's a policy that we included as a new policy in that document. So, whether that ends up here or there, I'm not sure, but we've already started the process of having those kind of policies incorporated in our comprehensive plan. I think that concludes my report for today. Again, my thought was to just introduce this, give you a chance to digest what is a pretty voluminous set of policies, understanding that most of these policies really don't affect Shelton. And a lot of the policies, as you saw, as I've stated before, actually have been stricken. That's been by the initiative of the county.
Okay.
All of the changes that are proposed here are in a review process with the county, so the time is right to, I think, make sure we're in the same alignment. So, to give us some time to review those. If you have some thoughts on those or things you want me to bring back, please get back to me in the coming weeks if you can.
Okay, so you just want like an email or?
That's correct, any way you want to.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll be looking in a couple more weeks, a final version. And I always like reading through it because I can see where we're spot on and where we're maybe not right where we're supposed to be, but it's a good report, really is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Intensive effort. I know, this is really difficult.
Seventy-five pages? Yeah. Okay. Do you have any other comments about that, about it? Anything, questions?
No, I think it will be a lot more user-friendly when we can read this out. And I know I was reading through the changes, and I think we used a little more flowery language than we needed to back in the day, so it looks good, Steve.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We now have an administration report from Kathy with a C, the Tyler update.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, the Financial Services Department is very excited to give you this report on the Tyler system update that. Just kind of start from the beginning. Our legacy system was put in place in the 1980s, so this is a huge endeavor for us to change to such a current system. And so, I kind of wanted to give you an update just to let you know where we're at. And basically, the Tyler system, it's the financial software for the most part, has five main components. There's the financial modules, the utility billing cashiering, the intergov which is permitting, business license taxes, the content manager, document scanning, and the web portal. Now, the first piece, the financial modules, it's the huge piece. It's the largest of them all, and it has a number of pieces within it. Our payroll piece, which was very important, at this point, it's stable. It's completed. It's stable. The calculations and reporting is accurate, although we do continue to work with Tyler to refine it as we use it so we gain ease of use and greater efficiencies. The accounts payable is a large piece of the financial module also, and that's completed. There's just some minor, as we use it, we start to find ways to use it, to use it at its full potential. What we found with the Tyler system is there's a number of ways to do things, different ways, so finding the one that works best for us and putting in place really is helpful. There's a lot of small pieces. Another big piece is the general ledger, and this is one we're really excited about right now. It includes the budgetary piece, and, you know, two or three weeks ago, we were able to actually produce electronic budgets that you can, any, the staff that needs to use it, the department heads and commissioners, can select it, and it'll generate a real-time budget and expenditures. So, where in the past, the old system, we had to complete a month before we could move into the next, get it all balanced. Now, it moves, it's very fluid in real time, so we're really, really excited about this. And we've been setting up meetings and to train the different personnel and commissioners on how to use it and select their report, and it's just, we were-
It's fun.
-pretty jazzed on that one. The next large module is the utility billing cashiering, and it is completed. It was deployed. We had a few minor issues cropping up related to the delinquent process, got them all worked out, and it's working very, very well. You can hardly tell when it's a penalty date or anything, where it used to be quite a lot going on, and you can hardly tell it's even there. It's just very, very smooth. And while we did that, we also were able to, we outsourced the printing of the bills, which is very, much more efficient and cost savings there. And the cashiering was fully deployed also, and it smoothed right out, you know, it was a learning curve, understanding how to set them up and get the receipts out, and that smoothed out, it's working really, really good, too. Now, the other three pieces, the intergov, the content manager document, and the web portal, we're waiting on the, we needed a new financial server and updates to the existing one. And that's been being worked on by our IT department. That was identified last year, and it just has taken some time to get that all in place, but I believe that's going to be happening on April 9th. And it'll take four or five months to deploy, to set up, we have to set up a deployment schedule for four to five months to do it. Now, that piece includes the permitting and our taxes, business license, such, and we will be able to put in our content manager where we can start scanning in documents and starting to become paperless. That was a plus. And the web portal, which also, we're working on a new website, which will include payments, electronic payments. Not only will it include electronic payments, as we start, we need to get the intergov in place so the business license and those monies can roll in, but we will start with electronic payments and then actually where people can submit work orders, you know, like want my water turned off electronically, and it'll come through the system. That's going to be really wonderful for us, too. So, we're getting there. It's taking a little bit of time. This has been really a huge project, but yeah. Anyway, we figured that'll happen close to year end. We'll have all this in place, about four or five months, you know, once we hit April 9th, get it in, smoothed out, and then start piece by piece putting on the items that we can do electronically online. Yeah, it's very exciting for us, so. So, there we are. Any questions?
No, I really appreciate your enthusiasm.
It's been a lot of work, but it's really rewarding, you know?
Good, good. See, all you had to do was ask.
That was really quick.
Probably the fastest decision that ever has been made.
Yeah.
The system works.
Did you say the payroll is at speed now, or is it almost at speed?
No, it's completed. What we're doing is we're trying to find more efficiencies on entering, because, like I say, you can do it a number of different ways, to reduce the time spent in getting it really cleaned up. So, a little further down the line, we can put the electronic time sheet in. Getting it cleaned up will make it easier for the employees to enter in their time sheets.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm going to turn over, the, turn over to Vicki Look, the acting city administrator this week while Dave is gone.
Well, I think Kathy did give the administration reports, so I don't think that anybody else had anything else to report today.
Okay, thank you. We have time for another general public comment, and you can speak on anything you want. Are you signed in?
No, sorry.
Yes. Is there anybody else signed in on that, Steve?
All the other probably signed in have spoken earlier.
Okay. Are you going to want to speak again, Lisa? State your name, your serial num, no, name, please, versus that.
Randy Lewis.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment a little bit on our favorite topic, the recent fee reduction that was passed. There were some assertions made that I think are worth challenging. The first one I wanted to talk about was, you know, the equity, the new fees versus the old fees. Personally, I'd like to know which of the two people per year that were built under the old higher fees are complaining. The other concept that was talked about was, you know, these poor people that bought these houses or pay mortgages that embedded in those mortgage payments are these higher fees. Not true. The people that buy the house negotiate a price for a house. They couldn't care less what the developer paid for a fee. Doesn't matter. He's paying a mortgage for a house price that he negotiated. Also, another, there was a comment that there's no factual underpinnings for what the commission has done. I would challenge that as well. No revenue the last 12 years. I mean, that's factual. To Marilyn's point, I realize that we country bumpkins don't have the intellectual capacity to understand this complex subject, but I guess all we can do is, because we think it feels right, well, sometimes if you do something because it feels right, that means it is right. It kind of, you know, and the other assertion was, there's no proof that this works anywhere. Personally, I would not make such a blanket statement. For example, I'm sure there are people that told Columbus, there's no proof that the earth But we actually have proof. We have the actual instances where it's worked. And I'll just name two of them, but we've found them all over the place. The city of Albuquerque, they have a program to influence the development in different parts of the city based on development fees. And here's a quote, "Our findings reveal that, in fact, the zone-based impact program in Albuquerque did have a significant effect on the location of new residential development." In California, there's a city called Menifee City. Since reducing impact fees, they have seen permit numbers explode, and they have the records to prove it. This is from an article written, "From a dismal one in January to 265 in November." And then, there's another, you know, we have proof here in Shelton, Habitat for Humanity just announced a building house, and they cited the reduced fees. So, that's something here in Shelton. And I want to commend, you know, Habitat for Humanity for defying somebody's macroeconomic social engineering conclusion somewhere. That must have been a lot of courage to do that. And then, finally, I think I've covered all of it. To say there's absolutely no proof that this works, it kind of reminds me of the, you know, I don't know why I know or make a blanket statement like that, when all you have to do is go online, you can find many examples where it did work. I'm not saying it has worked everywhere. I'm not saying it will work here, but you can't say there's no proof that it has not worked. It kind of reminds me of the tobacco companies back in the day, they would-
Go ahead, finish your statement. I'm just left.
Thirty seconds.
Yes, right.
Back in the day, they would testify in front of Congress and the courts, "There is no proof that tobacco smoking is bad for your health." So, anyway, that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Lisa? Is that right, Steve? I'm sorry. I took your job.
That's all right.
First and last name, Lisa. Thank you.
Lisa Renfro. My one first question is, could they put the phone number in the newspaper article regarding the homeless shelter that they wanted to buy to match, matching funds? Is that St. David's? That newspaper article, they had a website if you want to donate, but they don't have like a phone number because, you know, maybe not everyone knows how to use the computer or has one to help with that.
Community Lifeline.
Oh, Community Lifeline, sorry. Yeah, and my other question was, there's a house over there on, I think it's Bogertie, but it's, you know, it's on MLS, and they have chickens in the front of the yard, but it's not like hidden by a fence where you can't see them. And so, what is the ordinance for someone to have chickens? In what areas in corporate or this zoning of the core of the city versus the outskirts? It's sort of over by Capitol Hill area, going up that hill. Do you know where it is? And it's listed by City Real Estate. And I was like, oh, it looks perfect inside, it has everything, and it's small, and I was like, it looked beautiful. And then, when I drove up there, it's like, there's chickens in the front yard from the neighbors and roosters running around. And I always thought, well, I know people are limited to how many chickens they have, but what about where they have them in their yard and how they conceal them?
You want an answer?
Or resale? You know, is there an ordinance, or can there be if there's not?
I have the answer to that.
Okay.
Because I'm a chicken person.
Okay.
I have chickens in my yard. Mine are contained in a small fenced area. I was told that four to five per household, and they have to be contained in the yard. If they're out running around, you can call the city, and Eric, Eric will go take care of it, but-
There's roosters.
So, it doesn't matter if they're running around in the yard, if they're fenced in.
Yeah.
It's when they get out.
Yeah, they were out running around. I didn't want to.
Mary.
We just dealt with this. There's two answers to that. We have them on animal control officer in the city. However, Eric Burke and Tony Bush were decided to work with the county.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And Mary.
Okay, Marilyn.
The property in Fogerty is in the county. It's not under city jurisdiction, and some of us love hearing the rooster's crow, so don't anybody serve them for Sunday dinner.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. You know, everybody has a right to, it's just like-
That is county.
Yeah.
The county line is Fogerty.
Yeah, because it'd be nice if they were in the backyard.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
You have a comment about chickens?
I don't- I don't have a comment about chickens because I don't wanna take care of chickens, so I stay out of it.
Oh, they're fun, they're fun.
They're black eggs.
Oh, yeah.
They poke way better than, if you poke eggs.
Yeah. Yeah, they're good. Yeah. Okay, anybody else on there? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, administration final touch, Acting City Administrator Vicki Look.
Okay. Who has final touches? What's coming up? I think we're gonna have a proclamation for April about records management, and that's the subject that's very exciting to us.
Okay. Very good. And, um, I guess that's it. Announcement, uh, let's see, next meeting's April 4th, 2016 at 6:00 PM. And I am adjourning this meeting. Thank you.
You did it.